October, I believe it's the ninth. Yep, ninth, twenty twenty-four. To order, please. I've asked Council Vice Mayor Lopez Taft to lead us in the pledge.
All right, let's rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public with all its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Middleton?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
Mayor Karpinski Costa?
Present.
Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel fourteen, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replays Monday, October fourteenth, at nine a.m. on Metro Cable fourteen. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
I would make note that item five A is being pulled until the next council meeting. Other than that, motion?
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, please.
The next item is presentation item number four, High School Student Council Report.
This is a new feature that we're trying to have at our city where we get reports from our students on what's going on. So tonight, we have San Juan High School students, and if I mispronounce your name, you got to tell me I did. Adrielle Tapia. Is that it, Adrielle? And Benda Acade Navarro?
Brenda.
Brenda?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Brenda, that's Brenda. And you are members of your student council? Is that what you are?
Yes.
Members of the Associated Student Body.
Okay, well, why don't you tell us what's going on?
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor Karpinski Costa, Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, and councilors. I am San Juan High School Student Body Secretary Adrielle Landerostapia.
And I am junior class president Brendel C. Navarro. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some exciting developments happening at San Juan High School.
So much has happened since the commencement of school. Events and activities that have positively impacted our school community, such as our homecoming baile and a rally organized by the twenty twenty-six avid class. I am pleased to announce that our long-awaited production of Dracula will be on soon. Our drama department has been on hard at work, and we invite all of you to come out and support our talented performers on the nights of November fourteenth through the eighteenth. Additionally, our student leadership team is hard at work planning a fantastic fall carnival, which promises to be an exciting event for our school community. You are invited to attend.
This year, BSU has initiated a new program, Partners in Education. The objective being to better the partnership between our school and our Black and African American families, but it is still open to all of the families. Parents are to meet monthly and get to familiarize themselves with our staff to be able to strengthen the partnership within our school community. We are excited to see this partnership. Uh, well, oh, sorry. After all, we want all of our students to be heard. We are proud of our student athletes. Since the progress report came out, we have had a total of sixty-five students, having fifty-nine of those with a GPA of three point oh or better. These students have proved themselves not only as students, but also as athletes. Many of these students have been recognized on our daily announcements. Our student government, student government team would like to announce our upcoming Dollar Dance, which will be held October eleventh, following the football game. Regarding football, it is to our observations that many students have been supporting our football team by attending the games. Our band, who has been at every game this year, was also recently praised by the president of San Juan High School's Illuminati Association. Prop twenty-eight funds have allowed us to continue having a zero-period band, which continues to have music alive in the busy schedules.
Now, our club rush was held on September tenth through the eleventh, and it was a great success. I attended it and saw a great amount of participation. Our school community has approximately ten to fifteen active clubs, with more to be approved. Students will have a chance to engage with other, um, other students and hobbies they enjoy, fostering a larger sense of community, not only within each particular grade, but between all the classes.
Now, great things are going regarding our students, uh, our student ambassador program. Our student ambassadors will continue to welcome new students every day, providing tours and guiding them from class to class on their first day. It has been an invaluable program in helping our newcomers feel at home in their preferred languages.
The class size reduction to an average of twenty-five students per class has placed us in a position where we can hire more teachers, adding to the learning experiences of all our students. Between Prop twenty-eight and class size reduction, students have more access to art in advanced classes. We were able to bring back AP Psychology. Our AP Government course will also be a California State University of Sacramento ACE class, where students will earn college credit, too. Added, Advanced Arts and Ceramics, we added AP Computer Science Principles and increased the number of classes for AP US History, AP Literature, and AP Language. This builds on our continued effort to provide a rigorous academic program. More students have taken and passed AP classes than ever. Even more exciting is that we have more students enrolled in AP classes than we have ever had. Our principal, Mr. Leves, participated in a recent Facilities Committee meeting with the district. The chief operations officer, along with Mr. Leves, talked about the revamp coming to our stadium and that it will start no, uh, no later than this summer. Our school may even receive a new science wing. I am glad to hear that San Juan High School will finally be receiving long-awaited upgrades. The district is finally doing something about the facilities, which have been long ignored, and students will be pleased.
We will now give a short summary to the content in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking audience. Ahora daremos un breve resumen en español para nuestros espectadores de habla hispana. Hemos tenido un gran comienzo del año escolar veinte veinticuatro, veinte veinticinco. Tuvimos éxito con nuestro baile reciente para celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana, ya que nuestra escuela cuenta con un gran número de estudiantes de origen hispano. Nuestra un, nuestra unión de las estudiantes afroamericanas ha indicado un programa para mejorar la participación de los padres a la escuela. Todos los padres son bienvenidos para participar. El tamaño de las clases ha reducido a veinticinco estudiantes por aula, lo que ha permitido agregar clases del más expecte, especializadas para todos los estudiantes. Disfruten los clases más excitantes. También tenemos un programa para ayudar a los estudiantes independientemente en su idioma de origen, a sentirse bienvenidos a la escuela con la ayuda de algunos, de los alumnos, alumnos, embajadores. Eso es todo, gracias.
Thank you again for allowing us to share with you our student voice here from San Juan High School. As is announced on the talk, all, every day, every day is a great day to be a Spartan. Thank you.
This is an incredible idea that our city manager had to bring students forward to us. Um, comments?
Yeah. One, thank you so much. I know how much courage it takes to come up here and to, to do what you just did and to explain to us all the great things that are happening at San Juan High School. More importantly, thank you as well for translating into Spanish. Although I have long since forgotten how to speak, I can still listen and understand and, you know, perfecto. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, too, wanted to thank you. I was a parent of a Spartan, and she was in student leadership, and I always said that this would be so great to come to city council and do a report, and, um, thank you for taking advantage of the opportunity to share with us what's going on, because we, you know, I, for one, would love to watch a production of Dracula. You have a wonderful theater, and I think that is something the community would be very interested, since we lost our little theater here in, in the community. So thank you for sharing all of your activities.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, well presented, well done, very proud of you guys. Thank you so much for coming forward and doing this.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you talked about all the more AP classes that you're having, and that's really, I didn't hear you mention your culinary academy, which everybody, you know, that we think is the pride and joy of your school. So did you mention that and I didn't hear it?
We didn't mention a culinary academy or neither passways, but they are being, uh, a lot of people are attending the passways right now, and it's going great.
So that's a wonderful program as well. And I have a Spartan hat. I generally wear it when I'm not here, so. People mistake me for being a high school student. So we, we want to come down and take a photo, and we have swag, swag, swag ladies? That was wonderful, and I'm not surprised that we have a future aerospace engineer. Next item, please.
The next item is proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as Fire Prevention Week.
And I have asked Councilmember Schaefer to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to invite Sacramento Metro Fire, the Fire Team, to the podium to accept the proclamation. So I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'll give you an opportunity to comment after, and then we'll all come down and take a picture. So proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October sixth to the twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as, excuse me, as Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Citrus Heights and Sacramento Metro Fire are committed to the, ensuring the safety and security of all those living in the, and visiting Citrus Heights, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are, uh, are the locations where people are the great, at the greatest risk from fire, and according to the National Fire Protection Association, fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and sixty thousand homes, fires in twenty twenty-two, and the twenty twenty-four Fire Protection Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, serves to remind residents of the importance of having working smoke alarms installed in every sleeping room, outside of each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And, smoke alarm, smoke alarms detect smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger and the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape, escape safely. Whereas the residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas the City of Citrus Heights, in partnership with Sacramento Metropolitan Fire, are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, risk reduction programs, and community resources. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim October sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as Fire Prevention Week, and urges all citizens to learn about fire prevention and take personal steps to increase their, their, their safety from fires and support efforts, um, to protect the community from fire incidents. It's really interesting, so I actually, actually had a house fire. It was a big house fire in, uh, two thousand and seventeen, where my furnace, the interior of my furnace caught fire. Um, I really thought that I kind of knew what to do, um, but when I realized if I opened up the box, there's a chance that it could spread, that's when I asked my wife to call Metro Fire, and they came out and put the fire out. So I'm grateful for the, uh, for Station Twenty-three responded to that case, uh, and they've been great, so, uh, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Well, we've got our comments, so let's, let's have them talk. Would you like to speak?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Amy Niagara, and I'm the deputy fire marshal for the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District. I think it's important to remember what Fire Prevention Week is about and why it happens. Every year, we celebrate Fire Prevention Week in October, the week of the ninth. It commemorates the great Chicago Fire of eighteen seventy-one. During that fire, two hundred and fifty lives were lost, more than a hundred thousand people were left homeless, and more than seventeen thousand structures were destroyed. Again, this is probably the beginning of our fire codes and our building codes that we see today. Um, again, like Councilmember Schaefer stated, Fire Prevention Week, our theme and campaign this year is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. It is a difference of mere seconds between saving your life and escaping, um, or a tragedy. So it is important to check your smoke alarms once a month to ensure they're working properly, making sure that they're installed in every bedroom, outside of every sleeping area, and each level of your home, um, as well as to change your smoke alarms every ten-year based on manufacturer's recommendations. Um, your manufacturer date is on the back of your smoke alarms. It's not necessarily when you install them, so make sure you're checking that ten-year life of, of your smoke alarm, or when you're testing them once a month and they're not working, please change them out. Again, thank you for this proclamation, we truly appreciate it. Go home, check your smoke alarms, and be safe. Thank you.
Just one, based off of personal experience, y'all told a story about how my child set a toilet paper hoard on fire during COVID, and Metro Fire had to come save us. Be sure that you also check your fire extinguisher. If it's still inside the box, friends, um, that's not appropriate. Read the instructions, make sure you check the expiration date.
Absolutely.
I wanted to comment, um, April West came to our neighborhood meeting last month, and she is number one, fantastic. But number two, um, she brought up something that, you know, most people don't realize. What if you are hard of hearing? They have alarms, smoke alarms that are bed shakers that shake your bed, but then what if you're not in bed? So then they have some other devices that, that flash strobe lights, and so, that if you have someone who is hard of hearing, some of the elderly people, especially those who live in mobile homes or something like that, there are alternatives to the noisy ones that someone might not hear.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to bring that up and to comment on April being terrific.
Thank you so much.
But I think we're coming down to take a photo. Next item, please.
The next item is item six, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Week.
And I have chosen to do this one because I love the code enforcement officers. Not that you love your fire officers, I know. Okay. Who's here to accept the proclamation? Who's here, Deborah? We have several. Ooh, the squad, the squad. Is this everybody? Just minus Tiffany, right? You are the Police Services Supervisor? Oh, you're here. I was going to invite you to the podium, you're already here. Okay, they have our little cheat sheet. This is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Week. Whereas code enforcement officers serve as dedicated professionals in our community, ensuring the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances, and whereas code enforcement officers often face complex situations and work diligently to maintain the quality of life in our local neighborhoods by addressing building safety, property maintenance, zoning regulations, and neighborhood deterioration, and whereas code enforcement officers are essential to both residential and business communities, executing a shared vision of preserving the city's business aesthetics and fostering community improvement, and whereas code enforcement officers contribute significantly to the protection of public health and safety, aid in the preservation of property values, and assist citizens with the abatement of blight in our community, and whereas the role of code enforcement officers is to support our community members, encourage community involvement, and collaborate with our city and police department partners focused on enhancing the overall quality of life for our residents by implementing strategies from within the Citrus Heights Cares Campaign, and whereas the state of California wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers in our community. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Of course, we appreciate you all year long, but we make special this time, and does hereby urge all Citrus Heights community members to recognize and express their appreciation for the dedicated team members who serve as our city's code enforcement officers. Would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am Police Services Supervisor Deborah Miller with your Citrus Heights Police Department. On behalf of Chief Turkot, Commander Frye, Manager Campbell, we have the privilege of celebrating Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Our officers play a critical role in keeping Citrus Heights safe, clean, and vibrant. Their hard work, dedication ensure our neighborhoods remain places we are proud to call home. It's not just about enforcing rules, it's about building community relationships. Campaigns like Citrus Heights Cares, it encourages residents to report, maintain, and chip in when they see nuisances in their neighborhoods. These officers engage with residents showing empathy and care for individual circumstances while striving to uphold the standards that protect the health and safety of our city. It is with, with great pleasure that I take this moment to recognize and introduce you to our code enforcement team. We have Senior Code Enforcement Officer Dominic Grillo, Dylan Burke, Nicole Ollinger, and Angelique Clark. I would also like to recognize our Program Assistant Tammy McCormick for keeping our unit organized and well-running. Tonight, I want to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation to our code enforcement officers. Their collective efforts have contributed to our organization's success, and their impact on our community is immeasurable. Thank you for all that you do to keep Citrus Heights thriving, and thank you to City Council for recognizing our code enforcement officers.
Anyone have comments? Portia?
Great job. You guys do a fantastic job. This morning, my husband was riding out to take the kids to school, and he said, I just saw, you know, the big truck you guys got full of stuff, and we saw a couple officers, and they were helping a person. He was like, it was so cool to see it in action. He like, he hadn't seen it out in the streets, but to see, he watched the interaction that you had with those individuals, and he noticed the compassion and the empathy, and it made him just so excited and so happy to live in a city like this.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well, you know, ever since we started this beautification crew, um, effort, I think the focus on code enforcement and what you do, the tremendous work that you do, is really making a difference in our city, and I hope that you get the thanks, um, as well as in balance with the complaints that you hear, you know, because I know it's hard to listen to complaints all day, and, um, I hope you get as many thank yous as you do. I need you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I absolutely want to let you guys know that I very much appreciate, I've had some interaction with Dominic there. You guys are really professional, and you provide great customer service, and I just want to let you know, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you as well. I think most of the things that we get complaints about have to do with code enforcement issues that someone's complaining about somebody else, and, and on top of what you do, you know, proactively with the Cares Campaign, that you, you handle a lot of our neighborhood disputes, and so it's appreciated because it takes the burden off of us. And so with that, I'd like to have a little photo. Want a photo? One more proclamation, I think. Next item, please.
The next item is proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October twenty twenty-four as National Community Planning Month.
All right. I would like to invite our Community Development Director Casey Campanar, Senior Planner Allison Bermudez, and Assistant Planner Stephanie Louis to the podium. And team? Thank you. Proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming October twenty twenty-four as National Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, counties, and other places, and whereas community planning can help manage change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live in their surroundings, and provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials, professional community and regional planners, and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States and is endorsed by the American Planning Association as an opportunity to highlight how planners can lead communities to safer, more equitable, resilient, and prosperous communities; and whereas National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of members of the Citrus Heights community, including the city's Community Development Department, Planning Commission, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Citrus Heights. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights hereby recognizes the month of October 2024 as National Community Planning Month. Casey?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Casey Campanar, Community Development Director. It's an honor to follow our colleagues in fire and code enforcement. This team works closely with each of them, so it's nice to follow them. I want to take a minute just to thank you for recognizing the team. We have a very small but mighty team. You can see here, Allison Bermudez is our Senior Planner, Stephanie Louie is our Assistant Planner, and Stacy Hildebrand is our Department Admin Assistant. So between the three of them, they keep things running. They do not only current planning, advanced planning, also business licensing. They review all the permits that come to you, as well as dozens of others that you don't see, things like temporary use permits and tree permits, and all with a lens on making the city vibrant and thriving, and how to improve the city. This group, as you noted, has received recognition from the state and local American Planning Association, so very well-qualified team, and I cannot say enough of how proud I am of each and every one of them. So thank you very much for recognizing our team.
I was just so fascinated while you were talking. I was starting to, it's welcome team. Who wants to speak?
I'll say a couple of words. Great job, guys. We can see the impact of what you do in our community, from the business licenses down to Auburn Boulevard, from the way that you guys are able to modify our grants, get the work done, and keep us, you know, on track. We deeply, deeply appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You know, most people don't think about planning as such an important department, and yet it is. I really think that it is the work that is done behind the scenes that is least recognized that makes the most impact. You know, if you don't plan, you can't have a great vibrant outcome, and your team does that day in, day out, and a million things that we know goes into all of these processes, and we have no idea how hard you guys work, but thank you.
Well, I want to express my gratitude for the work you guys do, and just kind of prepare you that obviously we're a built-out community. This is really more for the public consumption, although you probably know this already. We're a built-out community. Our next steps at this point are redevelopment, and there's a lot of projects in the wings right now, and so you've got lots of great work ahead of you, and we look for great work to come. Thank you.
I don't know why, but I thought there were more people in the planning department. Is this true? It's all, there's not more? You do a lot of stuff.
We do.
So I was thinking, there's somebody not here, and I'm trying to think who was not here, but geez, guys, you do a lot of work. Thank you so much. And I, wow, okay.
Thank you.
We got the proclamation. You want a little photo op?
Sure.
What's our next item?
The next item is public comment. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each. The mayor has the discretion to reduce the allotted time. We have a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Also, consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda. And I do have one written comment for the end.
One comment written? Why don't you do that one first?
Okay. The public comment was submitted by Rick Hodgkins. While we are on the subject and topic of commemorating October as many different things, if it's all right with the City Council, I would like us to also commemorate October 2024 and every October thereafter as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. National Disability Employment Awareness Month has been around for quite a few years, and this is a month where we educate businesses, both private and public, about the importance of hiring people with disabilities, and paying them the same as everyone else, and align them to perform the same tasks as everyone else, with or without accommodations. And when we talk about nonprofit community support funding, you will hear me mention such an agency here in Citrus Heights, that which does just that very thing. If everyone would like more information, my email address is hodgepodge778@gmail.com, and I can send some more information, because I know that we have another council meeting coming up in two weeks or so. That concludes this comment.
Thank you. The first speaker, we have for the general, this is for items not on the agenda. I have one, two, three, four, I have five speakers. You may have five minutes each. If you spend less than five minutes, that's nice, we'll move along. Our first speaker is Joe Isaacs.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thanks for having me. My name is Joe Isaacs. I'm a trumpet player with the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band. I'm here to invite you all, and the people in this room, and the hundreds, dare I say, thousands of people tuning in from home to our annual Halloween Parade and Harvest Festival. This is something that is uniquely, unique to our community in Citrus Heights, it's an event that we've been putting on for a few years. This year, it has changed a little bit due to the construction of Auburn Boulevard. So typically, we would start at Twin Oaks and go down to Rush Park. This year, we're going to be starting at Rosswood, there in front of Grand Oaks. We'll be staging in Grand Oaks Elementary School. We'll head down Grand Oaks Boulevard, and then we'll turn there by the fire station and go into Rush Park, where we'll have our Harvest Festival. The parade will feature your Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, numerous community groups. We're fired up. Had practice on Monday, my ears are still ringing. The band is ready to go. If you've never done, I highly encourage you to come out and support the event, it's a lot of fun. The Harvest Festival really is a neat thing. There's going to be food, good food, vendors with crafts, a big car show, a pet costume contest. My nine-year-old is entering his chicken, so if you want to see that, come on out. It's going to be a good time. And so due to the change in location, I wanted to come out and invite you all, and then just say, "Thank you. Thanks for continuing to support the marching band. We are the best community marching band in the region. We're also the only community marching band in the region, and we couldn't do it without your support." So thank you.
So, Joe, so people should probably bring chairs, one of those portable chairs, to sit and watch the parade go by, because we don't have like we had on, there's no real seating, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're not going to be towing any cars, because it's a public street, obviously. We would, if you're feeling festive and cooperative, park somewhere off of Grand Oaks Boulevard. Bring a chair. The westbound lane will be open. Our esteemed Police Department will be providing traffic control for us. Yeah, it should be, it should be a good time. So bring a chair, for sure.
Okay, and then the other thing I was going to announce, that at the fair, the Citrus Heights Police Department is offering free microchipping. Deborah, come on back up.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Well, now we're guaranteed to have great turnout. Any other questions? All right. Thank you guys for your time, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Next speaker is David Shelton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, my name is David Shelton. This will be a somewhat different presentation than I normally make. I have two items. First of all, on a personal note, our new postmaster was involved in an automobile accident.
Oh, no.
He was rear-ended by another couple, and as bad luck would have it, they had no insurance, they had no driver's licenses, they had kids in the back of the seat, and they were somewhat impaired. However, he's back to work, and they're having problems in people breaking into mailboxes, particularly the ones that are accumulations of large amounts of paper in one place. They don't do it nicely, they just take the whole lock and rip it out, and that causes funds that they don't have to have to be replaced, so people can get their mail. And the encouraging thing is, if you see anybody around your mailbox, if you have this, just note down their license plate number, and then if something happens, pass that on to the Police Department, and that gives them some leads as to why were they there if they weren't part of your neighborhood? And you know who your neighbors are, you know who goes to your mailbox. If you've got a weird person checking it out, just make a note of it, and then if something happens, let the Police Department know. If nothing happens, well, you made a copious note. I make copious notes all the time. The second item is, I spoke before on code enforcement, and I found out from code enforcement, we were assigned, I was assigned Dylan Burke, and he works Tuesdays through Fridays from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. He works 10-hour days, four days a week, and I complained about three properties on Brookcrest Way. This is the type of report he sent back to me. Pictures? All three issues have been resolved, and I've got to say kudos to Mr. Burke, who really handled it well, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Our next speaker is Ms. Natalie Price. Thank you for the banner design. It turned out nice.
It was cute. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am here for a few reasons. So first, my REACH hat. We have just completed Good Neighbor Week. I was looking forward to coming in here and shouting the thousands of acts of neighboring that occurred. However, our data was lower than last year. So last year, we had 764 acts of neighboring reported. This year, we only had 203, so significantly less registered acts of neighboring. However, through conversation, we know the acts of neighboring were happening. We know there was the yard sales, we know there was the movie night, we know there were notes and gifts and thank yous going on. Just nobody got on and did that step of putting it in the database for us. So if you celebrated your neighbor last week, we thank you for doing so, and we hope that you continue to do so all year long. We did have 11 neighbors nominated for the 2024 Good Neighbor Award, and REACH is actively going through all of those submissions now, and will be reaching back out to the nominators to let them know if their nominees are moving forward, and we will be encouraging them to show up to the next council meeting for recognition. Now, my Citrus Heights Arts hat. We are having a community canvas event each month, starting in December and going all the way until summer. In December, we are kicking off the new year with preparation for manifesting your dreams. We are encouraging people to come to a Vision Board Workshop on December 28th at 11:00 a.m. in the Little Sylvan Community Clubhouse located at 7521 Community Drive. You can follow Citrus Heights Arts on social media to find out more about our community canvas events. It is a fun way to sample different artistic expression each month. I am excited and encouraged. However, this event, the Vision Board Event, only has 15 spaces. It is an in-depth workshop, so if you are interested, I highly encourage you to get on our website beginning tomorrow, and you will be able to register for this event.
Is it free?
It is free. We have a grant from the wonderful City of Citrus Heights, and we are also getting other sponsors to be named later. But thank you to the City of Citrus Heights for helping us do these workshops. This is free for our residents. The next hat I have is just that of Natalie Price, good old resident of Citrus Heights. And I want to say thank you to the neighbors out there who have dreams. Citrus Heights Good Neighbor Week was my dream, and when it got a little bit of support, man, did that fill my cup, and it felt good. But kindness and neighboring, that's Natalie's jam. That's not everybody. There are people in Citrus Heights who really love history, and we have a historic highway right here in Citrus Heights. I didn't know our highway was that historic. I'm not a history buff, but for those who are, I encourage you to go out to Auburn Boulevard and see the new Lincoln Highway signs that have been put up there through the Lincoln Highway Association and a collaboration with General Services. I was told to thank Regina Cave for this and her hard work in making this happen, and I want to give a quick shout-out to Area 3, because Area 3 is where this began. One of their members, Andrew, is a history buff, and he brought this to the table, and then once the neighborhood got behind it, they got the city behind it, and then the city made it happen. So my call to action from little old Natalie Price is to get involved in your neighborhood. I know you have dreams, and you have things that you'd like to see in this city, and that's where this difference starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Our next speaker is Michael Lagomarcino.
Good evening, members of City Council. On behalf of Chief Turcot, I would like to announce that the next Drug Takeback Day will be October 26th at the Police Department at 6815 Fountain Square Drive. We will be open from 8:00 to 2:00 in the afternoon. This is in conjunction, I believe it's nationwide, at least statewide, have these twice a year, and our next one is October the 26th. However, please remember that we can only take normally pills and such, we cannot take liquids or sharps. This is due to other circumstances. The Takeback Day will be staffed by two volunteers, and I believe Officer Smino will be joining us also. He's the one that puts this together every year. He's the one that puts this together every year. So once again, Drug Take Back Day this year in Citrus Heights will be October the 26th from 8:00 to 2:00 at 6315 Fountain Square Drive at the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. That's all I have for general comments. The rest have to do with special items on the agenda. So let's move on to the next item.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
So let's see. I have been kind of busy. But I had a SECOG meeting yesterday at, or this is the policy innovation where we cover budgets. Things are getting a little tight. We're going to start seeing some changes when it comes to SECOG. We're kind of going to be returning to normal. So if you were to look at the SECOG budget, it's going to look like, oh, my gosh, we've cut the funding dramatically. We just had an awful lot of, in 2018 to 19, the SECOG budget was about $19 million. And then from there, we kind of escalated up to $45 million. Lots of one-time projects, lots of funding for that respect. And we're going to be returning to sort of our normal funding cycle. But we have had to dip into our reserves. So that's kind of what they're for. And nothing to be super duper alarmed about. But the reserves are, we're, our reserves here in the city, City of Citrus Heights, were a little more conservative when it comes to our, what our budget numbers should be and what our reserve level should be. At SECOG, their, their reserve amount is about 15% of their budget, which is much, it's only $3 million, which unfortunately gets wiped out pretty fast. So anyhow, we're just kind of looking at, I think this is the repercussions of, of the budget cycle like we've seen with the state. We're just going to be going into a much more conservative mode moving forward. That, that's all I have.
And you went to the underground clothing connection with me.
I did. I did. I went to the underground. Thank you, Dr. Jana. That was great. It was, is Irene here? Yeah. Fantastic event. That is an amazing store. And it's for students who are experiencing homelessness. And they can go and shop there for absolutely free. And I'm just amazed at the, the, the modern styles of clothing that they have there. There are some of their, their clothing is absolutely brand new. So certainly would encourage anybody who knows a student who might be experiencing a really difficult time like that to have them reach out to the school. This is typically through San Juan Unified is where the, that's where the connection happens to begin with. And so I certainly want to make sure people are aware of there. So thank you, Mayor.
And you went to the candidates forum.
I did go to the candidate forum. Okay. Thank you.
And you went to the 40, the sign 40?
I went to the, yes, yes.
I got a key track of his calendar.
All right. Thank you, Jana. Dr. Mayor.
He's been busier than he let you know.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton, what you been up to? Because we don't know.
Let's see. Thursday, September 26th, I attended my first Sacramento and Metro Air Quality Management District meeting.
Did you do by Zoom or do you go down there?
I went down there in person. I wanted to see what all the hubbub was about.
Oh, okay.
And it was, it was actually a lot of fun. We allocated 1.8 million in transportation incentive grant to San Juan Unified School District so that they can buy zero emission buses. So electric buses are finally coming to our district. Super excited about that. I've been advocating for that since 2018. And so the funding is following here. We've allocated it. And next we'll be looking at Sacramento City Schools. But, you know, we worry about our schools right now. On Friday, October 4th, I participated in the Cal City Sacramento Valley Division's Second Annual Cornhole Tournament. I am the president of that division. And it was a lot of fun to see folks from all over, from Northern California, all the way from Lodi, you know, right now, I know a neighborhood come out and have, you know, little competitive cornhole game. I am absolutely terrible, have zero aim. So the poor person who would have been with me got lucky and they got, they got a better partner because no point dragging the team down. And Monday, all of us attended the Lincoln Highway Sign Dedication. And it's just so amazing to understand that this is a highway that actually ran from New York to San Francisco. You could literally drive it. I even hear there's an app that I still need to download so that you can kind of watch and drive parts of it right here in our own area. It's really wonderful to see how folks in our community have come together to make sure that we have this acknowledgement of the historic value and cultural aspects that Citrus Heights brings to our community. And that's all I did.
And Vice Mayor?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I attended on the 26th, which was Thursday, my SAC Library Board Meeting. And because I, I attend via Zoom, I don't always get the swag bags that everybody gets from all the visiting organizations. But I especially asked for the T-shirt that they gave everyone for encouraging everyone to read the banned books. And so I, I received my T-shirt.
B-A-N-N-E-D?
Yes, banned books, not books about bands. Because some of those books are classics. And there are certain books, we have no idea why classics are banned. So, you know, for the youth, I encourage them to run them through your family members who, who have some ideas about what should and should not be in your household. But there are so many great classics that are on this list that it blows my mind that they're banned. So I also attended the candidate forum. Very informative. It's always nice to go to these because you get to know people. You get to know not only the candidates, but the people who are aware in the community. And that's very important to us, to meet our neighbors at any given chance that we have. Also attended, of course, with the rest of my colleagues here, the Lincoln Highway Dedication. Very well done. It is very nice to get a perspective that you don't always hear from the Historical Society that is in charge of this particular stretch of highway. In our particular community, we have three locations where we will be able to get recognition as a city participating in the Lincoln Highway. And finally, but not least, I attended the San Juan Unified School District Board Meeting last night, which I do on occasion. I try to attend every month, at least one of their meetings. And the highlight of the meeting for me yesterday was their CTE presentation. And that's Career Technical Education. Their program is amazingly sophisticated. It has everything you can think about. It talked about dual enrollment, so many great programs that our high schoolers can be a part of. And the folks that run that program are incredibly talented and dedicated to getting our, our students in San Juan Unified with a living wage and entering the workforce with some skill or entering college with some credit. And that, to me, is super important. So I appreciated that. And I found out who the coordinator is that coordinates all the schools in Citrus Heights. So lots of gold to be mined in, in other community meetings. And I enjoyed that. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. So we always stay busy together. It's always nice when we have our, our fellows with us. So we did attend the underground clothing. It is, I thought it was underground. So I was very glad to see it was on the first floor. And it's, it's an incredible place. You would not know it was used items. They all look new and it's so well, and they do need volunteers. So if anyone, you know, we have a volunteer hub on our website that if you want to volunteer for various things, you go through the hub, put down what you're interested in. And when they have a need, you'll get a notification that there's a need. So it's like I volunteer to help with the library. So I'll be collecting ballots in front of the library on Election Day, just making sure they get into the little pink box, that they're signed and dated. And so anytime you want to volunteer, there's something to do on that hub. I did go to the candidates forum. If you missed it, it's, I think there's a link to it from the Sentinel or from the Messenger. But I think there's a link from the Sentinel. It's, it's a must-watch if you're in District 1 to vote. It's a must-watch if you want to know who'll be sitting, you know, in the, in this chair starting next year. I was supposed to go to Orlando, not Orlando, I was supposed to go to Tampa. Guess what? I didn't go. Tampa's having rain right now. So they canceled our little trip that we were supposed to get an award from the sewer, from the sewer district. So I had a nice dress. I had a good seat on the airplane, but it got canceled. So I did go to the sewer meeting this morning. And the news I have from the sewer meeting is that this year, we are raising the amount of credits we will give to low-income people who need rate assistance. So last year, it's $175 a year. It's, it's rated on your bill, which is every two months. So this year, it's going up to 195. So if you know someone low in, low income, you just call the district, talk to somebody in the rate assistance department, and they will send you the paperwork or fill out the paperwork for you. I think, and my, my biggest news I have tonight is my mosquito meeting will be on next week. But there was a, I get a notice when there's, okay, so you know, we have our West Nile mosquitoes, everybody knows those. And those mosquitoes are on the decline right now at this time of year, even though we've had a little bit of warm weather, there might be a spike of a couple of positive mosquitoes that are carrying the virus. But the bad news is that three sites in Area 10 have had Aedes aegypti. Aedes, A-E-D-E-S, Aedes aegypti is a mosquito that carries dengue, Zika, and chikungunya. We all heard about the Zika scare. And we don't have the disease. But if we get the mosquito, we are likely to have the disease. But we don't, so now we have the mosquito. And there were 17 Aedes aegypti found on, on Codota Way. So, and then a couple houses down, a couple more, and then on Sun Garden. So I urge you, this is not a time when the West Nile mosquitoes are out and about. If you are being bit at all, especially during the day, especially down by your ankles, and especially indoors in your house, these are bad mosquitoes and need, the district needs to know about them because we need to nip them in the bud before they get to where they, they overwinter. They can live on the edge, in, in, in a drop of water. They can multiply in a drop of water. They can live on the edge of a pot, of a flower pot, and wait six months for you to water that plant. And then they can, can multiply. So it's a mosquito that we need to stay on top of. The district is on top. They'll come to additional trapping. They go through the yard to look for more sources. They, these mosquitoes don't fly very far. They're, they're not big flyers. So likely, they'll just stay right around the, the neighborhood, a few houses, this direction, that direction. It's the same genus that carries heartworm and dog, Aedes. And so it's not the same mosquito, it's the same genus. And so they aren't big flyers. These are not giant travelers. And the West Nile mosquito, they'll go five miles, not these guys. They kind of just hang out in, in the local yard. So if you get bit, you must notify the district. So that's the best I could do. They have, they have stripes on them. Generally, they have little striped legs. They look like little tiger stripes. But by the time you do that to them, you don't really see the stripes too much. So, but if you're bit, please, please. The district does not think any call is, is too minor to handle. So they're happy to come out and check it out. And that's my report. Next item, please.
The next item is Consent Calendar, Item 8. The subject is Approval of Minutes of the Meeting of September 25th. And Consent Calendar, Item 9. The subject is Citrus Heights Community Center LED Lighting retrofit project approval of service agreement.
Anybody wish to pull an item for discussion or separate vote? Then is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Moving to seconded. Bye. But all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most passes. Next item.
The next item is Public Hearing, Item Number 10. The subject is Review Draft 2025 Annual Action Plan and Funding Recommendations and 2025 through 2029 Draft Consolidated Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the recommendation is to hear public testimony on the item and continue final action until October 23rd, 2024 City Council Meeting.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Before you open the public hearing, we hear your staff report.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. Nicole Piva with the Community Development Department. And also joining me tonight is Heidi Aguilar. She is the Managing Director with Root Policy Research. And Heidi, her team and I have been working on this draft plan for the last eight months. So we're excited to present this to you. As you remember, in July, we did give you a little snippet of this draft plan. So we're here tonight to hear a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. We're going to review and receive comments on the draft consolidated plan and the annual action plan. And then final action will be continued to the October 23rd Council Meeting. Just a quick background, it's a public hearing on CBG program. The five-year consolidated, consolidated plan outlines the goals and priorities. And then the annual action plan are the funding allocations that mirror the consolidated plan. So you have two parts. I'm going to turn it over to Heidi to go over the consolidated plan with you.
Great. Thank you so much, Nicole. And my pleasure to be here this evening. We've been assisting the City of Citrus Heights as well as SHRA. And they oversee their partners in the consolidated plan. They oversee the City of Sacramento and the County of Sacramento's plans. The consolidated plan is a HUD-required plan that guides the allocation and the investment of the CBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant Funds. These are block grants that come directly from HUD to the city to invest in community development and housing activities. The fiscal year that we're talking about, or they call it a program year, is January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2029. That's the five-year period. The annual action plan covers the fiscal years and, or the individual years over that period. Just to note that a project's inclusion in the plan does not guarantee that it will be funded or completed. This is a plan in the, on the consolidated plan. It's providing strategies and guidance for investment of those funds over a five-year period. So it's anticipating different types of investments and projects. And then what we do in this planning process is we come up with community priorities. And those are based on input from the community engagement exercises, data analysis. We worked really closely to involve your nonprofit partners, residents, and then anybody who wanted to participate and let us know what priorities should be, we're welcome to participate. During the last five-year period, the city completed several key projects. And this gives you an idea of what the city has been doing with these funds and what they could do with those investment of funds. $1.1 million in accessibility improvements. So those are improvements that help people get around both their houses as well as the city, particularly people with physical disabilities and limitations. $200,000 in the San Juan Park restroom improvements. The city issued four single-family low-interest loans for health and safety repairs to low-income homeowners. So we see a lot of CBG invested in home rehab projects like that. And then issued 32 mobile home health and safety repair forgivable loans to low-income homeowners. Just to note, I do this kind of work all over the country. And it's very exceptional and really wonderful to see those dollars invested in mobile homeowners and occupants as well. So a bit about our outreach efforts. Want to give credit to my colleagues, Sherri and Vanessa, who came to town and staffed a number of pop-up events. So we, at these events, gave people the opportunity to tell us what their priorities would be if they were in charge of those investments, identifying the top housing and community development needs. I was also here on July 10th where I presented preliminary findings and we talked about the plan. We're here tonight for a public hearing, and there will be an additional public hearing on October 23rd. A note about the community survey that we ran to support this plan. We got 777 responses from City of Citrus Heights residents, which was fantastic. That's a really big number for this type of plan. I will note that that kind, this kind of a survey is not meant to be a statistically significant survey. What we do in this survey, we don't do a random sample, but we do a lot of outreach through your partners to make sure that we're capturing people who have housing challenges. And we did a really good job of that. We also invited stakeholders to participate because they certainly have an interest in identifying needs and they're close to the population who have needs. And then my colleague Sherri interviewed a lot of folks through, she invited participation through email, but also did one-on-one interviews over the phone and in virtual meetings to collect additional data on priority needs. And I'm just going to give you just a really high-level view of the top findings from the resident survey. We have an extensive appendix. It's Appendix A. It's attached to the consolidated plan. It's got a lot of wonderful information collected from the engagement. But this first slide here, it, it shows you the responses to the questions that we asked in the survey of, do you face any of these challenges in your housing situation or neighborhood? And then folks chose from a list of options here. I think what really jumps out to me here is obviously the one at the top. I think what really jumps out to me here is obviously the one at the top, where people said, I have a disability and I can't get around the neighborhood. Forty-three percent of people who said they face a challenge said that was their primary challenge. And when you think about that, and Nicole will talk about the proposed investments of activities, certainly very important to make neighborhoods more accessible for people with disabilities. The other top needs we found were cannot afford accessibility features that we need in our house, so that rehabilitation. Many people said they don't face any challenges. And then we had another one-fifth that said, I worry that if I'm a renter and I request an accommodation, that I might get evicted. We also like to look at what we call cross tabs. So we take the entire population that responded to the survey, and then we do a cross by race, ethnicity. We look at income, age, and tenure. And you see the results here. So this shows you residents who said, I don't meet accessibility, or my housing doesn't meet my accessibility needs, who really represented those folks. You'll see most of these people are middle income. They identify as other minorities. They're precariously housed and renters, meaning that they're living in a situation where they may not be on a lease. They're living with friends or family. They're uncertain about their future housing. So people who need accessibility improvements are really those folks who are facing pretty significant housing challenges. And last but not least, we also asked people to rank what type of housing or rate, sorry, what type of housing is most important on a scale from one to 10. And the, the, you'll see here at the top of the, the chart, if I picked one, that means I strongly disagree. 10 is strongly agree. So the higher numbers indicate people's priorities for housing investments, or what they're saying is most important for housing investments. The top responses were housing affordable to residents living on fixed incomes, housing for youth exiting the foster system, apartments and condos that appeal to seniors, housing for residents who are using mobility. And then it goes down from there. But you see certainly a pattern here that your residents are really recognizing what's important in the community, and that comports with the types of investments that you've been making. So key community needs to kind of wrap this all up and put this all, all this information all together. Building healthy communities, preserving and expanding opportunities, and then providing what HUD calls public services, which are really supportive services that are responsive to those current needs. The target populations that identified, that were identified both in the survey as well as stakeholder interviews and in our analysis as having the greatest needs, low and moderate income households, unhoused people, persons with disabilities, seniors, veterans, youth, and then persons with mental disabilities. And these are the populations that in the plan we have identified as being priority populations to serve. So when we put all of that together, we worked with Nicole and her team to come up with five-year goals. And the way to think about these goals is this is providing guidance for investments for that annual action plan investment. We like to keep these goals fairly broad. So if a project is presented to the city and the city chooses to fund that project, that it is an eligible project. So those goals would include, these are five-year goals. Foster affordable housing, providing a variety of public services or supportive services, improving accessibility, constructing or upgrading public facilities, and then affirmatively furthering fair housing. And that last piece is a HUD requirement to continue to invest in mitigating discrimination. And that typically takes place in funding, of funding of public services. So funding fair housing organizations that assist both residents, who feel like they've been discriminated against, as well as organizations. With that, I'll turn, I'll, I'll pause to see if there are any questions, then we can turn to the action plan.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Can you roll back, I think it's five slides where you had the survey of this, that's the slide I'm looking for, right there. The one next, the next one from here. There we go, okay. So when I look through here and I look at the, how the, it's listed, I look at the housing for formerly justice-involved persons. How do you ask that question, if this is a survey, that you're asking them to draw strongly agree or some strongly disagree? Does everybody understand what that means? Because it sounds a little ambivalent to me. And so I'm just curious, has somebody, how do they explain how to rate that particular?
I'm sorry, let me just clarify. Do you mean how to actually do the rating? Or are you questioning the, some of the language that we use, like formerly justice-involved?
Yes. Does that mean somebody who was formerly incarcerated? What does that mean?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We, I, we have, so there are a number of different ways that you can refer to this particular population. Formerly justice-involved is a more, a more current way of referring to folks in that situation. Some folks will, will, or sometimes will use people who have criminal records or criminal backgrounds. I have not had people question the terminology. But that's, I, I can see how that might be confusing, but we haven't had people ask what that means.
I mean, you could say, you could, you might think that's a person, a victim of a crime.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I agree.
And I would hope that that would be higher in the list. And I wouldn't want to, I'd be concerned that if you're taking a survey like this, that people understand what you mean by that versus somebody who's a victim of a crime, who's been, who's been perpetrator of a crime or that's convicted of that crime.
Yeah, we could, we'll, I'll definitely, on the, the next round of surveys, clarify that. We do typically have open-ended text boxes. And then we also have the opportunity for folks to, who are taking the surveys, to contact us if they have any questions. People pretty actively do that. They will call us and they will send us emails. I will double-check that there wasn't any confusion on that, but thank you for that. I, I, I can see how that might be confusing.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Lauren? Continue on.
All right, moving on to part two, the draft annual action plan. So the city's an entitlement community under the federal CBG program. We do receive an annual grant. It's on a formula basis. And these funds are used to develop communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities to primarily low and moderate income persons. So in 2025, the city estimates receiving $600,000. And this is just an estimate. During the time of the development of this plan, HUD has not released its annual funding for 2025. So about mid-June, July of next year, we'll know our actual amount. So there's three pots of money that make up this $600,000. We have our public services, and that's capped at 15%. And these are per HUD. So we have $90,000 for nonprofits to provide or to apply for funding. 20% goes towards the administration of the program. So public notices, training, and just administrating the, the whole CBG program. And the remaining goes to a capital project, so the $390,000. So tonight, we'll review the recommendations of the public services and the capital funds. Citizen participation, during the development of this plan, HUD requires the city to have an approved citizen participation plan. It really just outlines the policies and procedures on how city staff engages the community, on how we spend our federal dollars on activities. So July 9th, we released an application to nonprofits to apply for funding. July 30th, I held a funding workshop. And that's for anyone who wants to attend, just to kind of understand what CBG is, if you to receive funds, what's expected of you. And then August 6th, applications were due. And we met with Quality of Life to make funding recommendations. That was on September 4th, and that was comprised of the mayor. Then September 25th, we released a draft action plan. That's for public comment, so 30-day period, public review. We're here tonight as a public hearing to review the draft plan and the recommendations. And then we'll have a second public hearing to consider the final adoption of the plan. And then finally, staff will submit this plan to HUD November 15th. So talking about the public services, this is the $90,000 we have to recommend nonprofits to provide services to our residents. So this table, the first column are the nonprofits who applied for funding. The middle column is the amount requested. You can see it's a little over the $90,000. And then the column in orange is what the Quality of Life Committee has recommended. So you'll see Jake's Journey Home is not recommended for funding. And Jake's Journey Home is a mobile homeless support program. It addresses the unhoused community, those that are veterans with support services and just wraparound services to get them to the next steps. So the city really does take prior, pride and priority in housing unhoused individuals. And we do have a current existing partnership with the County of Sacramento, homeless services and housing. And we have community health workers that are in the city, that are working with our unhoused clients, that really are successful in placing them in housing and providing them those services. So just having the addition to the secondary provider, Jake's Journey Home, we thought there might be a little overlap and duplicative effort. So the recommendation is not to fund Jake's Journey Home at this time. The recommendation is to fund Campus Life Connection. This is the after-school program. Meals on Wheels, the senior nutrition program. Community Link Capital Region and Project Sentinel. This is our renters' helpline. And then Sunrise Christian Food Ministry, Emergency Food Closet. Moving on to the pot of $390,000 to recommend funding for a capital project. We are estimating $390,000 to go towards the 2025 Pavement Preservation Improvement Plan. And then we'd also like to recommend reallocating our 2024 CBG capital money that was awarded to residential street resurfacing, the $381,000, putting it all into the Pavement Preservation Improvement Plan. So it's a little over $771,000. So in partnership with General Services, this project will consist of accessibility improvements, installing missing and repairing damaged sidewalks, installing ADA compliant ramps. And these improvements will happen throughout Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4. And then the second table there at the bottom, the Critical Home Repair Program. The city has issued several loans over the years with CBG funds for housing repair. And those funds are sometimes paid back. And so when a homeowner does pay back their loan, it goes into a revolving loan fund. And so we have almost $90,000. And then we have some unexpended prior-year funds and a total of $200,000 we would like to recommend to the Critical Home Repair Program. And this program will be administered by Rebuilding Together Sacramento. So their staff will income-qualify the household. They'll work with the homeowner on the scope of work, and they'll work with the contractor, and they'll work to the project till it has been completed. So with that $200,000, we estimate about eight home repair grants to mobile homes. So this is an exciting project. It's very needed in the community. Our current waitlist right now is about 30 mobile homeowners. So with that, we have the staff recommendation, but we are available for any questions.
Questions?
I have a question. Do we no longer have first-time homebuyer assistance? Is that something, did we, or is that another program? Do we not do that anymore?
So we do, we keep a, we have a waitlist because a lot of people do call and inquire about the program. We don't have funding for it. The market is just, it's not a, a very viable program for us to fund right now.
Because we can get more people into housing if we, sometimes it's that critical down payment issue that they can't get over. So if we ever have extra funds, be a good place to put it.
Yes.
Okay, so I am going to open the public hearing. I have several speakers. I will start with Julie Habib. She's from Campus Life. Hi, Julie.
Good evening. My name is Julie Habib, and I am the Director of the Sayonara Center. We are an after-school program for children and youth in first through 12th grade on Sayonara Drive. This past school year was one of the best. We had more artificial turf installed outside of our building, which was creating more space for the children to play. They really enjoy playing soccer, badminton, and volleyball. We also planted a garden, and to my surprise, it's thriving. It's been producing cucumbers, tomatoes, strawberries, and zucchinis. And we've been able to cut up the vegetables and serve them with our daily meal. And the students are also able to take them home. During the summer, we took 22 high school students to summer camp in Ojai for five days. We went to the beach where many of them took surf lessons. We heard from guest speakers, and we had team competitions. We also took 15 of our middle school students to summer camp in Santa Cruz for four days for the same activities. During the summer, we also hosted a couple block parties in our parking lot. It was a fun time to bring the students and their families together for a barbecue dinner and water inflatables to keep cool. School has been back in session for a little over a month now, and it's been great to see our, see our students and team of volunteers every day after school. We get to walk alongside our students in life and celebrate their accomplishments, such as making a school sports team, getting a job, and passing a difficult class. One of our proudest moments this year was in June, when we had 15 students graduate high school. Half of them have been attending the Sayonara Center since they were in first grade. It was a blast to attend all of their graduations and to celebrate them. Once a year, we take our high school students to a college tour at William Jessup University. From that tour earlier in the year, we now have a student living on campus and studying aviation. We also get to be there when our students experience heartbreak. They have a conflict with a friend, they don't get the job that they interview for, they have a parent diagnosed with cancer, an uncle shot and killed at the park, or a parent's life is taken. Having students in first through 12th grade allows for the whole family to participate in our program. Sometimes we lose contact with students when they move away or other circumstances, which can be really hard. A student that came consistently was unfortunately removed from their home in 2019 and since has been bouncing around in foster care. He had been attending the Sayonara Center for years along with his seven other siblings. When that happened, we lost all communication with him. But after five years, he reconnected with us this school year. He is now living local and is back with us at the Sayonara Center. The Sayonara Center is a home away from home for most of our students. They know that on a good day or a bad day, they are always welcomed, and they'll be greeted by caring adults. We believe that no one should ever be, should ever leave hungry, so we allow them to get seconds and thirds of the daily meal that we serve. Our goal is to raise up leaders from within the community, to effect positive change resulting in transformed lives in a transformed community. As this year comes to an end, we look forward to our holiday traditions with the students, such as pumpkin carving, Friendsgiving dinner, and many Christmas parties. Thank you for your continued support, belief, and trust in our program. None of this would be possible without the support from each of you and this incredible city.
Does anyone have any questions with Julie? Thank you, Julie. Our next speaker is Jennifer Mosello from Meals on Wheels.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Jennifer Mosello from Meals on Wheels, ACC, Meals on Wheels, Sacramento County. I'm sorry, you just rebranded. I'm still trying to correct my 14 years of habit. This is our new Executive Director, Mindy Clegg.
Thank you for having me.
We are really grateful for the support for, at the city, for the Community Development Block Grant Program. It's going to allow us to serve 4,000 meals to Citrus Heights residents so that they can stay in their homes and in your great community of Citrus Heights. Those meals will be a combination of home-delivered, hot or frozen, depending on what the senior needs. Or the Crossroads Cafe, I'm happy to report, is open, has been open since late February, early March. So they, you know, mobile seniors can go and have their meal at Crossroads now. So. So. We finished up last year. Between the two grants, we served 28,190 meals to 209 seniors. So, this is the first piece of allowing us to continue that. Thank you.
And, and just recently, I also met with the senior, the Senior Adult Services for Sacramento County, and they expressed the urgent need that they're seeing through their caseworkers for seniors in Citrus Heights that are in need of nutrition. And so, I just wanted to add that additional piece as well.
And are those seniors now on your, on your list? The ones from the county?
No, not at this time. Those are in addition to the ones that we have, a waitlist that we have developed due to funding. So, this additional money does help us bring that waitlist down and add those seniors to our program.
Go ahead. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Our next speaker is April Jessick. Jess, I didn't pronounce that right. April.
Yes. April Jessick from the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry. I'm excited to bring you an update since the last time I was here presenting. I wanted to let you know that we have started our evening distribution on Wednesday nights. We started last Wednesday, and we were able to serve 50 families, half of which were Citrus Heights residents, very exciting, and 21 who have never asked for help for food assistance before. We had our second one tonight, another 50 families, 35 of which were Citrus Heights families, and 30 of them who had never asked for help before. So, it's exciting to see that more people are warming up to the idea of asking for help when you need it. It's, it's a hard concept for some people. Also wanted to give an update. The Sacramento County Food Bank gave out their statistics for last year for food collection from the various stores in our area. And countywide, they collected 12 million pounds were recovered. And our tiny little agency, one of 126, we did 1.2 million of those pounds. So, our city has a lot to be proud of when it comes to saving the planet and making sure that our families are fed with really awesome food that come from all of our stores in the area. The funding that you guys are recommending to give us are going to help us to increase our capacity. Pre-COVID, we were serving about 50 families a day. Mid-COVID, we were about 120 to 150. We're now looking at about 180 families a day that we're serving, and I fully expect that to be over 200 by the time we increase our capacity to serve more people in our parking lot. So, just really exciting time to be able to getting the food recovered from these agencies and put into people's tummies that need it the most. We're partnering with our local schools. Mesa Verde came by this morning and picked up snacks. Kingswood's coming by in the morning. I just made a connection with San Juan tonight. So, just an exciting time to be a part of this community, reaching out to our neighborhood associations and seeing how we can get out there and serve the families where they're at, instead of relying on them to come and ask us for help.
Thank you. Any questions? The next speaker is Bonnie Patterson from Rebuilding Together.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and staff. I won't take much of your time. I just want to introduce ourselves and thank you all for your partnership over the years. So, my name is Bonnie Patterson. I'm the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together Sacramento. Rebuilding Together has provided safety modifications and home repairs in Sacramento County since 1991, and we are proud to have provided services to over 9,000 low-income homeowners in that time. So, from 2021 to 2023, we were contracted with the City of Citrus Heights to provide critical home repairs to low-income mobile homeowners. These repairs were provided at no cost to these homeowners. So, I'm sure you're aware, mobile homeowners are often low-income. Many of these homeowners are older adults on fixed incomes. So, we regularly, regularly hear that the cost of space rental, which they have no control over, is rising. With utilities and groceries, they are reaching their limit. So, what we're hearing is that it is impossible to keep up with repairs, especially costly, critical repairs. So, because of our three-year partnership with the city, we were able to help 32 homeowners, as was mentioned earlier, with replacement of roofs, HVAC systems, windows, water heaters, flooring, porches, steps, all of those things that would be critical to safety. So, I am proud that we've been partners with a city like yours that recognizes the importance of helping those, especially in mobile homes, because there's not a lot of cities that are doing that. And we recognize that these residents matter to you, and we like to work with the cities that, that represent that. So, thank you again for considering us for funding from the city's Critical Home Repair Grant using CBG funds. And lastly, I just want to give a shout out to Nicole Piva. She has been a wonderful representative of the city and a joy to work with.
Any questions? I'm glad you are in Citrus Heights. You, you also make some of those ramps if people need wheelchair ramps, you know, to get their wheelchairs up and down.
Yes. We, we, a large part of what we do is safe at home, so that's helping older adults and those with disabilities that have.
How do we get the word out? How does the word get out that your services are there?
Well, we do a lot of outreach through, like Sacramento County has a tabling events, that kind of thing we work with. We work with caregivers. We work with hospitals, nursing groups, occupational therapists. And then we have some funding through, like SHRA, to send out some mailers.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And that's all the speakers I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before I close the public hearing?
Mayor? Yes, we have.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
I do have a public comment.
Okay.
This was submitted by Rick Hodgkins. All I can say for this one is that we use those funds for housing, transportation, and similar projects here in the City of Citrus Heights. I will note and report that the County of Supervisors heard the presentation last March about finding technology for pedestrians, which is definitely one of the many different things which Community Development Block Grant funds could and should be used for as this plan goes forward. Even though I have not had the time to review the draft, because I am not that technical, I will say that when it comes to pedestrian safety, along with accessible sidewalks and accessible crosswalks, is finding technology that can be implemented into the city's infrastructure. Once again, that the County Board of Supervisors heard a presentation on pedestrian wayfinding back in March of last year. That concludes his comment.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. This is an item that we just continue till the next meeting. So, is there anything else we need to do besides this?
Nope, just continue till October 23rd to make final adoption.
Okay. Any comments from any council members before we continue the item? Do we have to make a motion to continue? Or just do it? Next item.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 11, allocation of nonprofit community support fund for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And the recommendation is to adopt resolution approving nonprofit community support fund allocations for fiscal year 2024 through 2025.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Council. I'm Courtney Riddle with the Economic Development and Community Engagement Department, and I'm here tonight to share with you a little bit on the nonprofit community support fund applications that we received for this round. So, a little bit of the background so that the public knows. The City of Citrus Heights offers a limited one-time funding through the Nonprofit Community Support Fund for organizations that provide services to the residents of Citrus Heights. The Quality of Life Committee aimed to accommodate funding requests from multiple nonprofit organizations that had not previously received funding. And so, this year, you will see that there are a number of organizations that also received a recommendation for the council to support their funding tonight, representing underserved communications populations within the city to enhance the community engagement and to broaden benefits to the citizens. So, a little bit about the economic development program that supports this nonprofit community support fund. It is one of the council's strategic goals to enhance community vibrancy and engagement. And there's currently $150,000 available for this fund for this fiscal year. A little bit about how we notify the public of this opportunity is we work with Nicole Piva's group and the collaborative. We also utilize the city's website. And this year, we had an outreach to about 200 nonprofit organizations within the, the community. The application period was open from July the 16th through August the 16th of this year, and we received 12 applications. There were a range, I can read them, I realize this is very small for the public. We received 12 applications. One was from Cameron Champ Foundation for STEM Education and Training out of a gaming vehicle. They requested $5,000. The other one's from Campus Life Connection, supporting this efforts at the Sayonara Center for $25,000. We also received an application from Citrus Heights Heart for rental assistant programs for families and veterans who are potentially experiencing homelessness for $75,000. We received an application from Coach Care, which was a startup business here and off of Auburn Boulevard that was requesting support for improvements at the, for their leasing of the space at $30,000. We also received an application from the Junior Achievement of Sacramento to support training of lifeguards through, pardon me, through the Parks District for $10,000. We received an application from Meals on Wheels to continue support for vulnerable seniors to receive meals and the continued support of the cafe at $82,000. San Juan Education Foundation put in an application for individual grants for the K through eight school sites at $10,000. Single Mom Strong put in an application to do a project to support the creation of a database for marketing of their existing programs at $13,276. Sunrise Christian Food Ministry put in an application for $25,000 to remove the, and replace the asphalt at the community church where their, where they host their food pantry. The Rooted Collective put in an application for $6,700 for the, for their program Streets, For the Streets outreach. And the UCP of Sacramento put in an application for $8,055 for movie and sensory nights and a roller skating events. And Yes2College put in an application for $150,000 for mini garden project and nutrition education. The total amount that we received in request was $440,031. And again, the program only had $150,000 for this fiscal year. The Quality of Life Committee met on September the 4th and reviewed the applications with staff to make the recommendations. From that, the Quality of Life Committee recommended five total applications receive funding from this year's award. And that was Campus Life for their continued support of the Sayonara Center at $22,000. Citrus Heights Heart for their rental assistance program at $40,000. Meals on Wheels at $70,000 for continued support of food assistance for vulnerable seniors. San Juan Education Facility Foundation, pardon me, was recommended for $10,000 for individual school site grants. And UCP of Sacramento for their movie nights and roller skating events was recommended at $8,000 for a total of $150,000. So, I'll stop there and pause for questions.
Questions? Question? Anybody questions? No questions? No questions? We should, discussion?
No. You were, you were our Quality of Life Committee.
I'll take full response. So, when I got to the meeting, it was, staff had recommended three groups. And I said, it's always the same three. It's always the same three. And that's fine. But I thought that we should at least try to include some of the, some of the things we never generally fund. I mean, I thought the whole idea of community funding was that we kick the bird out of the nest and let it go fly, and that we, we help newer groups, you know, that are coming in, and, and that some people become more self-sufficient, do their own fundraising, and have opportunities for that. UCP was the one I had the question about. We were going to determine and not, whether they were totally in Citrus Heights. Did we determine that?
I did reach out to them to ask them that question. And for the movie nights, there is no movie theater in Citrus Heights that they can utilize. So, they did offer to use the movie theater right here near us in our neighboring city, right off of Greenback here. And they will be using the roller skating rink near the Sunrise Mall.
Oh, cool. And UCP is the United Cerebral Palsy People, so we had never funded them before. So, and they only wanted $8,000. So, I thought, well, that's kind of a worthy investment. And then the other group was the San Juan Schools, that, their new group.
That is correct. So, the foundation requested a total of $10,000. And their idea, their proposal is to give $1,000 grants to each of the K through eight schools, for those schools to come up with their own project ideas, to implement projects locally within their school, to get the kids, to get the parents in those homes and those folks that live near the schools to participate in offering some type of community-based project with the $1,000 grant.
I thought that was great. So, that's kind of what we came up with. And to do that, we had to jiggle everybody's requests. The metrics, rubrics that Courtney developed are good guidelines, but they're not absolute. So, but it gives you a picture of some. So, any questions or discussion?
I think it's a great allocation of the limited funding that we have. There's always going to be, you know.
Wish we had more.
More, more asked than what we actually have funds for. So, good job for the Quality of Life Committee for really taking a chance on some newer nonprofits and finding creative ways to allocate, to really spread that money around.
Well, I'm surprised that we had 200 that we reached out to. I mean, that we have that many in our community. So, I do have one speaker for this item, and our speaker is Tara Taylor. I didn't forget you, Tara.
I know you didn't. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and staff. I am here tonight to thank you for all your past support, and also to say that I'm really disappointed that we were not recommended for funding this year. And I wanted to ask for your reconsideration for a lot of reasons. So, I thought I would remind you of the three times that you have funded us in the past and what kind of return you've received on your investment. We've been a member of the city or, or located in the city for five years. Three years ago, we requested our first funds of $9,100 to support additional teaching staff. And we came through on that outcome of doubling our preschool students. Then the next year, we requested $15,000 to support the expansion of our site. And we came through on that construction, adding an infant and toddler classroom as well as a career clothing closet. Last year, we requested funding in the amount of $24,000. And with those funds, we doubled the enrollment in our infant toddler classroom to fill that space, as well as hosting two career, career exploration events, which brought people from outside of Citrus Heights into Citrus Heights and served regionally our single moms to connect them with opportunities to excel in their careers. So, every time that we've presented a request to the city, it's always been a short-term seed funding type of request with long-term benefits. And every time, we've come through with the outcome that we've promised. Now, we've requested funds to connect further with the City of Citrus Heights. And we spent the last five years really building our infrastructure, our programs, our space out to support our community. And I heard you ask earlier how you connect with potential participants to another organization. We don't have an advertising budget. We operate the highest-quality preschools in this city, as voted by your residents every year, four years in a row, at 30% lower cost. And we do that to pass all those savings on to our local families. That said, we cannot afford to really market unless we have outside investment. That means that we're not closely connected to Citrus Heights residents. We are a regional organization that wants to have closer connection to Citrus Heights. So, we created a plan that would connect us through the San Juan School District because that aligns with your city goals of, I forget the exact wording, but uplifting community, or Citrus Heights families by building connectivity with the schools and the district. So, we really were thoughtful about this request and about our ability to further serve City, City of Citrus Heights. serve City of Citrus Heights residents, and I think it's unfortunate to have an organization such as ours that's doing really important work, but not connect with your local residents. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you had about our proposal, but I just thought I would come here and maybe remind you as to why this proposal was important.
I have a question. So Courtney, can you scroll back to the, so this list right here, when I look at Single Mom Strong, what does "not fully quantified" mean?
So, in the application, what we're looking for is if they specify specifically the number of Citrus Heights residents that would benefit from the funding that they've requested.
There's no way for us to quantify that on the front end of a project to connect with schools. We could tell you how many single mothers reside in Citrus Heights, 8,000 plus. We could tell you how many Citrus Heights residents are supported by our preschool, over 140 in the last three years. But we can't tell you how many we will reach, because we haven't reached them yet.
So, I have a follow-up question for Courtney. So, does that have direct bearing on the rubric that you use?
So it is one of the criteria on the rubric for us to identify, again, specifically the number of residents that will benefit from the program. Since this funding is for nonprofits to bring programs and services directly to our residents, it is one of the areas within the rubric that they are scored on.
Okay.
Tara, there's no doubt that your organization is valuable to our community, and so, but you see, we have 150,000, and I'm looking, do I want to take it away from Meals on Wheels? Do I want to take it away from the Sayonara Center? I mean, so like, you kind of have to balance, and so this year, just, you've been getting funding from us year after year after year, and you're doing wonderful things with it. But I also bought a pie. I bought a pie. So Tara's selling chicken pot pies. But it's the way we have to balance all the other groups that are also in competition with you. Not to say your group is bad.
And I would argue that we have so much-
So if you were me, who would you cut off to give you money?
I would look at who consistently asks you for money at large quantities and doesn't deliver new or expanded programs. Every single time.
It doesn't have to be expanded. Sometimes they're homeless.
But you're asking for additional reach.
The homeless program is asked for twice as much as she's getting, so we cut them back already. So, I'm not sure where I would have cut. If I wanted to give you money, if me won personally, if I didn't need my council members to join me, I would do it. You know that. We're partners on our fireworks booth, and I'm happy to share that with you. But I'll tell you, this is a tough one. We have to make decisions throughout the community, and try to, you know, involve smaller groups who have, we tell people, ask for funding, ask for funding, and then we just give it to the same groups over and over and over again.
You don't consider us a smaller group?
Smaller groups, meaning the $8,000 ask, and the, you know, that they had never asked before and had never received before. They're a new group that we have not funded before. And it's like, we lose our credibility in the community, I think, if we don't come forth with what we're offering. So, we love you dearly. It's not a thing. It's just the matter of money. 150,000 is it. And the needs for the other groups, I think, outweigh yours.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to argue differently, please feel free. Is this an action item?
Mayor, I believe that we might have speakers that also spoke on item 10 and wanted to speak on this item.
I don't have any more speaker sheets. You?
I do have one written public comment. Do we have, I think we might have an audience member as well that wanted to speak.
Okay.
Was this on item 10?
11.
Nope, sorry, 11, yeah.
I don't have a sheet for her.
She'll just walk up.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name's Angelia Lee. I am Director of Social Services for Coach Care Collaborative. Our center is dedicated to supporting the community by providing creative gallery-like space for local coaches, entrepreneurs, and artists. We host networking events, offer services, and hold pop-up events that bring people together to support personal and professional growth. Since opening, we've featured local artists and had several successful community events. I'm here today to express our enthusiasm for Citrus Heights Economic Development. We were seeking funding, but we weren't approved. We are still going to be seeking funding right now. On October 26th, we have a Halloween pop-up, where we have 100 registered families to attend this one. We have volunteers that are doing the trunk-or-treat, and we're providing everything with our own funds. So we are just here to let you guys know, we're still here, we're still thriving, and we're still trying. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, you guys. I've reached out to the Economic Development Department to explore the funding opportunities, so I'll be working with them and just trying to seek out funding to help get our community together. We also have paintings that'll be a part of our gallery, so it'll, we're looking for funding still for the beautification for that, too. But right now, I'm still enthusiastic about it. We have a whole, we have over 100 people attending our event. We do Bible study on Mondays for the women, and we're doing a food distribution as well. That's pretty much all I got today, y'all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And you did fill out a sheet, and just somehow it didn't get in that group for area, for number 11.
See? Told you.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Are there any other speakers? Are we done?
I have one written public comment.
Okay.
This was submitted by Rick Hodgkins. Here is an agency which I think is worthy of funding. It is called Progressive Employment Concepts, and they also have sister agency in Yolo County called Community Employment Services. For more information, or how to donate, or if the city is interested in awarding them nonprofit community support funds, because after all, this is a Citrus Heights-based business, their website is progressiveemployment.org, and they are one of only a handful of agencies that knows how to support individuals with disabilities, particularly developmental disabilities, in finding, getting, and keeping a competitive, integrated job. That concludes his comment.
Thank you, Rick. Does anybody want to change anything in the recommendation, or go for it?
Nope.
Okay. Yeah, it's not easy to do this, but it's a decision we have to make.
Is this a resolution we want to vote on right here? Will I make it?
Make a motion.
Yes, make a motion. A resolution of City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California, approving nonprofit community support funding, fund allocations for fiscal year 2425.
Motion made by Councilmember Schaefer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Lopez Taft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which passes. Do we have a cheery item for the next item?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
The next item is item 12. The subject is Neighborhood Improvement Partnership Grant: Conference and Workshop Attendance Policy. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the Neighborhood Improvement Partnership Grant: Conference and Workshop Attendance Policy.
Good evening again, Mayor. Councilmembers Courtney Riddle, Economic Development and Community Engagement Department. I'm here tonight to bring an item back to you that was originally discussed by this council back in April of this year. It's the Neighborhood Improvement Partnership Programs: Conference and Workshop Attendance Policy. So again, a bit of the background. The Neighborhood Improvement Partnership Grant encourages residents to shape their neighborhoods by beautifying public spaces, improving safety and enhancing the aesthetics, increasing engagement, and fostering a robust community connection. So again, back in April, this council was able to hear a request for NIP funding, Neighborhood Improvement Partnership funding, for residents and members of the neighborhood areas to attend the NUSA conference. There was quite a bit of conversation about that item that night, and council recommended that staff come back at a future date with a policy that helps us provide some critical eligibility and criteria around who could attend that particular event or any other conference or workshop utilizing NIP funds. So this policy that we're bringing forth today is a part of the strategic plan goals that the council has, and it does certainly address the issues of participation and community engagement at the level of the neighborhood areas. So specifically, some of the items that were discussed that night that are included in this policy is, again, to identify who is eligible to receive funding to attend conferences and workshops. So specifically, this policy addresses the fact that the participants, pardon me, must be active members of reach or serve on their respective neighborhood board. Active neighborhood residents can be nominated, but they must be nominated by their neighborhood area president. So specifically, again, the NIP Conference and Workshop Attendance Policy addresses key items that were discussed at that council meeting that night, which is, again, allocating a specific dollar amount. So the annual allocation for this recommendation is $5,000. This funding is estimated to cover the cost of two participants per year to attend conferences and workshops, depending on the location of that particular workshop, ensuring that community leaders have the opportunity to gain valuable resources and skills. Again, part of the discussion that night was to ensure that there was priority given to first-time conference attendees. So this policy addresses that and encourages broader participation to get fresh perspectives aligning from the feedback received from this council. What we've also noticed that was important to council was the reporting requirement. You all have seen a little bit tonight with Natalie Price attending tonight to tell you a little bit more about the Good Neighbor Week. So one of the requirements for receiving funding is that anyone attending a conference or workshop needs to come back and tell us what they did, and what items and ideas that they brought back, and how they were implemented within their community. And again, this approach ensures that the money that's being spent and dedicating the time and the resources for those folks to attend those conferences are being brought back and being able to be implemented within the neighborhoods. So I'll stop there and let the council ask any questions.
Question?
I just have a comment. We can only afford to send two people, and we have, how do we, how is it decided which neighborhoods get to send somebody? So if Area 5 wants to send somebody, and Area 2 and 6 want to send somebody, and Chayson wants to send somebody, who decides who gets to go and who doesn't get to go?
So the policy did not specifically address the ranking or the hierarchy, and I would certainly recommend that the REACH Board, after receiving those nominations and requests, make the ultimate decision on who would be nominated to receive the funding to attend. I think that that would help them identify, again, where the resources were best utilized by looking at who applied for the funds, and then making that recommendation.
I had, along that same thread, Tim, because that was a point I brought up in my thoughts here. To enhance the program's impact, I thought maybe we should consider implementing like a rotation system of, you know, amongst the neighborhood associations. So the REACH Board will have the final say, of course, but making sure like, if Area 5 in the last two years have sent someone, and there should be some type of rotation where other folks get a bit more of a priority, especially as we're trying to reengage and reactivate neighborhood areas.
If you just have it as a guideline that REACH, you have somewhere in here, first come, first serve, which I didn't understand that, because it is better to register in February, because you get all the early bird discounts, and you get your fare, you know, your wannabe SWA fares. But if you wait till last minute, you're paying more for your hotel, more for your airplane, and more for registration. The registration itself goes up. And so I think to qualify, you should have done the earliest registration you can and not wait till last, oh, nobody signed up, I'll go. And it's like, no, it costs more for that person. Next year, it's in Jacksonville, Florida, so it might be a little more expensive.
Pardon? Said, if there is a Jacksonville.
If there is, next year, but geez. I was supposed to be in Tampa today, so I'm glad I wasn't. So, that, I think that Councilmember Middleton's suggestion is a good one, that's a guideline. And this, I don't want to give preference to the REACH president, because when Tanya was president, I think she went five years in a row. So, it's really for people who haven't been before. I think they gain more, you know, the new guy. I don't think they need a guide to go with them, someone who's been there so many times that they're now the guide.
So how did we arrive at the $5,000 number?
By how much it costs the last two years to send people. Is that right? Is that how it come up?
That's essentially correct. So we looked at the cost, that was the average cost per person to attend the last two years, and this past NUSA conference, each one of the attendees was given $1,800 to attend. That was inclusive of airfare, hotel, and conference registration, so looking at the cost.
And then there's one night you got to go out to eat, because they don't feed you. So there's one time you got to go out, yeah.
I might add to Councilmember Schaefer that there was some discussion about neighborhood improvement projects, still having some funding available for neighborhood improvement projects if they come in, so that's where the $5,000 recommendation-
This doesn't come out of that funding, does it?
There's $10,000 in total in that pot of money, so the idea here is $5,000 would be allocated.
So there's only $5,000 left for improvement projects?
Last year, we didn't have one submitted.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. I'm satisfied.
With that additional guideline in there for rotation amongst neighborhood areas, I'm fine with it.
I think that's a great idea, fortunately.
Yep. And I'd really like to not give preference to the REACH president over someone other than the REACH president, unless there's no one else wants to go. At some point, it gets to that point where no one wants to go. I've been there. Uh-oh.
May I speak?
Yes.
Shabbles here.
You got it. Kathy Morris, and I am actually the Vice President of REACH, and I am, and council members, and mayor and staff. I kind of can guarantee you that we can come up with some guidelines to make them rational. We have talked about this in the REACH meetings a lot of times, and our problem is usually finding someone else who can go. It's not that we have too many people who want to attend, it's we have people who cannot attend. So we are usually recruiting someone to go to the meetings. So I do think it's a very viable function, and I think the amount is not unreasonable. And I think if you would like, I'm relatively sure REACH could come up with some guidelines that would not be conflicting, because we have the concern of all the neighborhood areas, and we want to make sure that we spread the information and the education throughout our neighborhoods, and that we encourage a lot of participation. So, Madam Mayor, I do understand clearly how we don't want the same people to go year after year after year. We want to encourage widespread participation from different neighbors, neighborhoods, and I think we can do that if that is your desire.
Well, and you could always send a third person out of the REACH monies that you have piled up in the bank, so. You can always, you know, raise funds or add a third or fourth, more than one person.
If we really had a lot of people who wanted to go, we probably could figure out some way to manage it.
When it was in Oregon, and he and I went, you know, we could have traveled a lot cheaper up to Oregon, so you could have probably spent more people, sent more people to Oregon. And I don't know, it seems to be an exception, too, when there's one of the neighborhoods, if they enter the NODI competition, I think we need to send more than two people if someone's a NODI finalist. So, like, Neighborhood hadn't won the NODI, the National Award, and I think Henry sent six of us there, so, because we were getting the award. So I think that there ought to be, you know, an exception for the amount if we're participants in an awards process. You love them awards.
Mayor, I have a comment.
What we want to do is have, do we want to have REACH send, you want to have, wait till REACH sends us some stuff?
I also have one written public comment.
Okay.
Submitted by Rick Hodgkins. I was not aware of the fact that we have conference workshops for neighborhood improvement partnerships. I believe I- I believe I live in either Area Six or Ten, I don't know. I have attended some Sunrise Ranch area meetings a few years ago, but none recently. Is there a way I could get more information on the neighborhood improvement partnerships from my area? And just to let you know, we have had staff reach out to him.
Okay. I think he said Six. So what if we let Reach come up with some, before we adopt a, a thing? Is that something we can ship off to Reach?
Counsel, this is not a time-sensitive matter, other than we have another, so if, if the council desires to have a little bit more time on this and would like a little bit more outreach with Reach, that's a purview of the council.
We want to get the input from Reach's board, you know, Reach, Reach can give us their input on what they think if this is a good system. And then we can bring it back with the Reach. We don't have to take everything they say, but we can use what they say with what we have and maybe combine them.
So I just liked it, that we don't have an arbitrary criteria on how this, I like that the, I like the structure that we have here, and I just, my communication to Reach would be, needs to be some structure, needs to be some really good, well delineated, this is how you qualify for these, for this funding, so that we're not, you know, people don't think that we're, there's any kind of a favoritism or anything like that going on. We want to make sure that, hey, here's how you qualify for this, here's the structure, and, and there's a limited number of spaces, and that's, so I'm comfortable with, with turning it over to Reach as long as they, as long as it's structured.
Well, we, we'll, yeah, we'll let them come up with something, too.
Yeah, have them come back with some guidelines to help, you know, enhance what we have going on, and that way we can make sure we have input from the folks who are actually going to have the final decision, right?
Okay.
And I just want to make, I'm not thrilled about taking any active resident to send them out of NIP money, because if it's taking the NIP money away from the neighborhoods, an active neighbor, an active person does not necessarily get involved in the neighborhood projects. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of a NIP project that Area Ten wants to do, and it, it would eat up the entire budget if all it was, was 5,000. So it used to be, we used to have a lot of money in the NIP money. What happened to all that money?
I will say, Madam Mayor, that some of those funds that are within, within the overall department funding relative to the grants, there are opportunities to move some of those funds amongst categories, too. So it's a recommended 10,000, but if there isn't funding in other categories at that time, that may be undersubscribed through an action, we can reallocate it if you have a bigger project. So there is some flexibility there.
What did the, what did the movie cost? Just curious, what that movie cost?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars to put the movie in the park. And, and I know that that's not the first time we've had a movie in the park, so it's expensive. And if we're cleaning out the money with NUSA conferences, then we're not having the money to do locally that benefits more people.
If we do have funds that are available in some of those other categories, certainly the council has the purview to reallocate those.
This is being recorded, just me. Okay, so that's our, our recommendation is we'll send this to Reach and see what they come up with, we'll combine what they come up with, what we come up with, and we'll come up with something. Okay.
Great job, Courtney, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Next item, please.
The next item is department reports, item number 13, Citrus Heights Police Activity League update.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Chris Frye, Special Services Division Commander with the Police Department, and this evening, I'm here to provide you with an overview and some updates on our Police Activities League, otherwise known as our PAL program. So just a little background about our organization. PAL is a registered 503(c)(1) nonprofit organization that was founded in June of 2010. Next year will be a milestone year for us as we will be celebrating 15 years of service for the youth within our community, which we're extremely happy about. Since June of 2010, PAL has made a meaningful difference in the lives of hundreds of children in our community through our various programs and events that we offer. The organization operates under a board of directors that is comprised, or excuse me, comprised of sworn police officers, professional staff members, former council members, local business owners, service club members, and community members. I've had the honor and privilege to serve as the PAL president since 2019, and I can honestly say that the, the members on the PAL board, both former and current, have been truly remarkable to work with. It has been a pleasure to collaborate with such dedicated individuals who are all committed to mentoring the youth within our community. The primary goal of PAL is to bridge, to bridge the gaps between youth and the law enforcement and provide healthy and educational activities that are focused on decision-making and gang and drug prevention. As with many nonprofit organizations nationwide, our membership was significantly impacted during the pandemic, despite our efforts to remain engaged with the community through the virtual events that we held at that time. We finished 2023 with 23 members on our roster, and to date, I'm proud to say that we have nearly doubled that number to 43 members with more signing up at every event. The increase in membership can partially be attributed to the efforts of our new PAL This past spring, our board found ourselves in need of a new PAL coordinator. The board decided to hold a competitive process to identify our next PAL coordinator, and through that process, Rachel Turcot was selected. Rachel started in July of this year and hit the ground running. She wasted no time engaging with the community, our staff, and immediately started planning various fall events. We're excited to have her on board and can't wait to see the exciting things that the future holds for PAL. So building relationships is what PAL is all about. The pictures that you see in front of you right now are three pictures that were taken in August. These pictures were taken during National Night Out. And just a little background about the, the pictures and how we got there that evening. Our board met a few months prior to National Night Out, and we had discussed what we wanted to do as a board. Prior to this, we had been in contact with management at Sunrise Point with some children within their community that were interested in joining the PAL program. We got them signed up, and then what we wanted to do with the board is really travel around the community to engage with the different programs and neighborhood associations that had signed up for National Night Out. And our, our initial plan was to, like I said, have a convoy and have some of the children that had signed up from the Sunrise Point community to join us as we kind of convoyed around the, the city. We reconvene as a, as a board, and then we decided, you know what? Since there was only a limited number of children from Sunrise Point that could join us that evening, we decided, let's do something different, let's bring the party to them. So we decided to reach out to management staff over at Sunrise Point, had some meetings to, to work out the logistics on how we could make this happen. We collaborated with Hope Cooperative, and then immediately got online and signed up to have our own location for National Night Out. And this is the first time we've ever done this as a PAL, PAL board. And I, I got to tell you, it really turned out to be something more than I ever expected it to be. We had, as you can see in the, the pictures, we had coloring booths for the kids, we had a, a wheel of swag that the kids could get. Hope Cooperative was really fantastic, they came out and coordinated the barbecue for the kids, we had an ice cream truck out there. It was really a great time, and, and what I saw was the entire community at Sunrise Point come out and really enjoy the evening. And it was, it wasn't just Sunrise Point residents, there was other residents and community members throughout the city that had stopped by to enjoy the event as well. The, the next picture is three different events, and I mentioned the board and how proud I am of our board. It's not just the board that really concentrates on mentoring the youth in our community, it's, it's everybody underneath the roof at the Police Department, and that includes our sworn staff, our professional staff, interns, volunteers, anybody that works at the Police Department really takes a, a care and concern to, to really reach out to the kids in our community, and they all get engaged with our PAL events. So really with, you know, each one of these events, these are three separate events, and it's all about inspiring leadership, encouraging academic excellence, and then promoting personal growth with the kids that are in our program. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of the activities that we've participated in here in 2024. We were part of the grand opening of the Arcade Cripple Creek Trail celebration. We took part in the Stars and Stripes celebration in, in July, that's always a, a fan favorite for the community. City Scoop, we were at two of the three. Unfortunately, Mother Nature didn't work out with us, and we had to cancel one of them due to the excessive heat. The Junior Giants closing ceremony. We participated in the Rush Park Star Wars Fair, that was, that was a good time. We partnered with Sunrise Point, like I just mentioned, for National Night Out. Sunday Fundy recently. Egg My House is an annual event that we, we host to, to help families around the community that would like us to help out their families, so that way they can get other tasks done. We'll hide eggs for that family, and then we secretly take off as a PAL board. And then Summer Splash is a, is a night swim that takes part, or takes place, rather, over at Rush Park. The kids always enjoy that one for obvious reasons. Paddle boarding was a new one that we put into our events this year, and that was a great opportunity for the kids, not only to learn how to paddleboard, but it was really an educational opportunity about water safety as well. So one of the most gratifying things for me working on the PAL board is to witness the selfless acts made by our members. A few years back, we had a 12-year-old Lykan Elementary student and PAL member that donated $100 of his own money to the organization. This member told his mother that all he wanted to do was earn the money and then pay it forward, and then donate it to PAL. He's also one of the members who participated in every single program that we offered. These are the moments that we see, we can't quantify how we're impacting the children that are in this program, but when you see selfless acts like this by the children, it, it just inspires you, it fills your cup, and it makes you want to come back and really serve the community even more. So we have a lot of fun events that are coming up. This particular event is coming up extremely fast, and in about 48 hours, it'll be over. But I did want to throw it out there for our community and anybody that might be in the audience tonight. We have never done a PAL golf tournament, but we decided, let's do something different this year. So this year, we are going to host our first PAL golf tournament. It's going to be this Friday, October 11th, over at the Wood Creek Golf Course in Roseville. It's going to be an eight o'clock start, shotgun start, and I do want to encourage anybody that's watching this evening or maybe in the audience, if you do enjoy golf and you want to put together a foursome, there is still time. I stopped everybody from sending over the rosters over to the golf course, so I would encourage you, if you enjoy golf, do click on the QR code that's seen on the screen and sign up. We are going to close the, the registrations for the golf tournament tomorrow at five o'clock. If you don't like golfing and you're not good, like myself, then I would encourage you to get involved with volunteering. It's going to be a great day, Mother Nature's going to work with us, it's, the weather's going to be fantastic. So if you would like to volunteer, we're going to have volunteers helping out, we have a couple shifts, one from six to 10, and then we have a second shift that's going to run from 10 to 12. If you want to stay out there all day with us, we'd love to have you from six to two. And if you're interested in that, you can reach out to us through PAL@citrusheights.net. And then No Rest, less than two weeks after the PAL golf tournament, we're going to run right into our trunk-or-treat event, which has become a community favorite, for sure. That's going to be held on Thursday, October 24th. Again, it's going to be held at the Citrus Heights parking lot across the street. It's going to be from five o'clock at night to eight o'clock, and it's always, always a great time. We have several booths, I think we've surpassed already the number of booths that we had last year, so we're looking forward to a great time. And Rachel, that I mentioned earlier, our PAL coordinator, has already secured some different things and items that are going to be part of trunk-or-treat this year. There will be some food options for those that are in attendance, which is going to be extremely helpful for families that are getting off work and they want to have something other than a bag full of candy. So that'll be a, a good time. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention and thank our, our partners in our parking lot with Dignity Health for partnering, partnering with us again this year, so we're really thankful for their help. And then, of course, another community favorite, Shop of the Cop. So we have reached out, and this year, we are committed to, to work with Walmart. Unfortunately, right now, we're still working on the logistics to get an exact date. As soon as we have a date and time, we will absolutely put that on our social media and make sure that it's also on our PAL website as well. And then as far as the community, I want to express my sincere appreciation to our community for the incredible support that PAL has received throughout the years. The progress that we've made wouldn't have been possible without the generous contributions from both our local businesses and our community members. The donations that we do receive have assisted PAL with funding, all of our PAL members with insurance coverage at all of our events, free or low-cost field trips, all of our materials and supplies, membership for the CALPAL, which is the California Police Activities League, and then our national PAL memberships as well, and then, most importantly, meals. So there's three things that children will always get at any PAL event that they attend. Number one, they're going to have a great time, they're going to leave with a smile on their face. Two, they're never going to leave hungry. They will always get meals, we make sure that everybody is fed, they have a great time, and that the parents don't have to worry about feeding them when they get home. And it's not candy, it's, most of it's healthy food, we do have pizza from time to time. And then lastly, there's always an educational component with every event that we do. We want to make sure that when the kids come, they have a good time, but they also learn something. So it's, it's almost a way of us tricking them that you're having a good time, but you're also learning something, and they really take away from that. And what's fun is when they come back to the next event and they talk about what they learned from the last event, whether it was water safety, or, you know, stranger danger when you're walking home, what to look for, who to call, and, and they'll talk with our PAL board members at the, at the events about what they learned from the last meeting, which is really nice to hear. So if there's anybody either in the audience or maybe watching this evening that think, you know what, I think I might want to get my child involved, we do have room, we're absolutely, you'd be welcome to join PAL if you're between the ages of five and 17. A parent can sign up at any time. All they really have to do is fill out a very short registration form, and then there's some liability forms as well that they would sign, and then, of course, we would reach out to you and, and get your child enrolled into our program. It's extremely easy, you can either use the QR codes that you see on your screen or reach out to citrusheightspal.com, and you'll receive more information on how to sign up for the program. So with that, I just want to thank the council for the time tonight to, to kind of give you an overview and an update on what we're doing with the Police Activities League, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you work with the Sayonara Center kids, too?
We do, as a matter of fact, our, one of our PAL board members is, is Mrs. Julie Habib. We absolutely do.
Because I was thinking, between five and 17, there's a whole crew of them over there.
Yes. Yeah, we've enjoyed working with the Sayonara Center for years.
Questions or comments? Good work, good work.
Yeah, just a, just a comment.
Comment.
Thank you very much, a great report, really enjoyed it.
Thank you, sir.
It was fantastic.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, your city manager asking you with a few updates for you. We talked about this at our last meeting, but it's coming up, and we've got one more opportunity to speak to it. We've got our Fall Chip In Day that's occurring on October 12th at 8:30 to 12:30 PM. You can register at our citrusheightsvolunteers.net, but this is a, a great effort to further beautify our city and really kind of get it, those fantastic community image improvements that, that we've been working on, and this is run by Armando Alasca's on our staff, and it's always a fantastic turnout. Some treats are there in the morning, too, to help motivate people on pitching in and doing some labor that beautifies the community. The HART fundraiser for the Spaghetti Fest is occurring on October 18th, still opportunity, I believe, to get some tickets for that. The doors open at 5:30 PM, and you can find more information on that at HART's website, and we also will have, we post on that relative to our social. And then, this was talked about a little bit earlier, but we have our Citrus Heights Community Marching Band, a speaker came during public comment to put a plug in for the Halloween Parade. This is a fantastic event, a great car show, it's actually a really robust car show in years past, fantastic parade, talked a little bit about the parade earlier, and it's just, it's, it's a great community event. And in addition to the, and it's a Halloween, okay, I've got to explain that a little bit, it's a dog-themed event, and one of the things that's occurring is our mayor actually is donating some chips to do a free chipping event with our animal services unit. So it's a chip-chip parade, there'll be free microchipping there as well, so lots of fun. And again, that is going to be on Saturday, October 19th, come check it out. And as Commander Frye just mentioned, the trunk-or-treat is always a hit with the community, and so that'll again be at our Citrus Heights Police Department parking lot on October 24th at 5:00 PM. That concludes my updates.
I want to call attention to something I saw on the email today. You did a report on our fiscal prudence? You didn't put that in there.
You're right, I thank you for identifying that. I did release, one of my quarterly city managers message, and this was on fiscal prudence, and it has a link to the Budget and Brief document that our Administrative Services Department produces. Department produces, which is a fantastic document. It's a quick, easy read to get a handle on our budget, our fiscal position, and the fiscal health of our city, and also some of the community priorities that the council has set, that our staff is executing on. Thank you for mentioning that, I appreciate that.
So your message can be viewed on our website?
It can, it can be viewed on our website, and if you want to sign up for updates, it's one that you can sign up for, and we can get it in your inbox, too, for future messages. But yes, it's on our website, and I appreciate you mentioning that.
Okay. Next item, please.
The next item is Items Requested by Councilmembers and Future Agenda Items.
I got one. We're good at proclaiming, so I'm wondering if at the next meeting, we can do a proclamation for Disability Employment Awareness Month, as Rick Hodgkins pointed out. It is something recognized nationwide. I'm wondering if Pride Industries would be the proper recipient of the proclamation? Because they're local, and I think that's what they do. So can we do that second? Second? Second by Portia.
We'll definitely prepare the proclamation, reach out to Pride and, and others that may be interested.
Because I think it's a good idea, and I, I would hate to not recognize that, that's worthy. And we're, and we're good at proclaiming, so.
We'll make it so.
Okay.
But Portia gets to read that one.
She does. She, she got gypped today.
I'll read it.
Okay. We have fun, kind of. Anything else, anybody? Adjourned.